I want to call the meeting to order. The first order of business is we're going to go into executive session for two reasons. Procedure number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and this was in regards to superintendent's contract.
So moved.
And procedure number seven, which is to comply with an act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, executive session minutes of May 25th, June 8th, and August 17th.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call vote, Greg.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will reconvene into regular session. We'll probably be back in about five to 10 minutes. Return to public session. The next order of business, if you could stand if you're able, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands loyalition under God, if it is look, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's a special night because the selectmen are joining us, so I'm going to turn it over to Chairman Frere, so he's able to open his meeting. This will be a joint meeting between the two boards.
Chairman Young, with that, I open up the meeting of the Board of Selectmen.
So the process tonight is that we have a member who left, Adam Lambert, and we're going to replace that member. As I sent to you guys, we sent a notification from Mr. Greg Rowe. He was the only candidate who asked to be a member, which I think is very good. We're very pleased to have him. So the first order of business, I'll ask if anyone has any questions for Mr. Rowe before we start. Mr. Frere, I'll ask your board to go first, if that's okay.
Any questions? We're good.
Any member of this board have questions?
Mr. Chair?
Please.
I think it would be helpful, I'm Mo Franco, Vice Chair of the School Committee. Welcome. It would be helpful, we all had the letter that you sent available for us to read through that expressed your intent and a little bit about you, but if you could maybe just explain or read that letter or explain a little bit of that to the people who might be watching, that would be great.
Excellent. Yes, my name is Greg Rowe. I have lived in Middleborough for over a year. We have been very excited about this town and the direction it's been going. I've been an educator at Rockland High School for 18 years, and I've also done things like student council, coaching soccer, and been involved in a number of other things. The president of Eastern Mass Girls Soccer Association and nonprofit, and I really am excited about getting involved with Middleborough between the new school vote, the support of the students you saw not only at the football game, but on the high five that's now playing on Channel 5. There's a lot of good things going in this town. I'd be very happy to be a part of it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have one. Mr. Rowe, is it your intention, as you know, your term would end in April?
Yes.
Is it your intention to run for reelection?
That would be ideal, yes.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Again, I'll ask if anyone has any questions. My understanding is this requires a roll call vote that we're supposed to do anytime we do a joint piece, so I'll ask you guys if you want to go first.
All right. Board of Selectmen, Frere votes in favor?
Multi in favor.
Delby in favor.
Aye.
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 It's unanimous. Thank you very much, Greg. Greg, you're welcome to join us. Unfortunately, you haven't been sworn in, so you can't vote on issues, but as we've done in the past, we'll do that. Before you guys leave, I do want to let you know about one thing. It was our, I had put on the, on the, on our agenda tonight, but we didn't finish with our attorney, so I'm still waiting for a piece for my attorney, so we're going to do it in the next meeting. The board allowed me to, this is the last year of the superintendent's contract, so the board allowed me to begin negotiations with the superintendent for a new contract, and I wanted you all to know that the superintendent has agreed to a new five-year contract, so he'll be a superintendent in Middleborough for another five years. So I wanted to let you all know, and we will take a vote on that in our next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
While we have the Board of Selectmen here, there is an item on the agenda that talks about community service, and I don't know if you've seen this packet, but I'd love to give them a packet and get that to them. I know we're always talking about items on the Board of Selectmen, I go to the meetings, we hear about these great, great opportunities, but this will be a contact person and everything that we can bring back, and then each of you could contact if you have an item that you wanted, so I'd be more than willing to give you that right now, and you can have it. Thank you.
And I just want to thank you all for joining us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Anytime. Board of Selectmen has invited the athletic department and the football team to the meeting on Monday. You guys are all welcome to join us.
I believe, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Good place.
That they will be coming, I believe, on December 18th.
On 18th?
The December 11th meeting, there's a conflict with some key people, so that there'll be representatives, if not the entire team, but there'll at least be representatives, the head coach, the athletic director, at the December 18th meeting, and they will also be coming to the school committee meeting on December 21st, the, the Super Bowl successful football team, so.
So yeah, congratulations, and thank you for that. That was quite a series, quite a season, a lot of fun. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Unanimously, thank you very much.
Next item on my agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Discussion names. Mr. McCarthy.
How you doing? First, I'd like to send a huge congratulations to the football team for their 43-20 defeat of Littleton in the Division VI MIA Super Bowl. The team truly demonstrated what it means to be a S H M all season and capped it off with a magical playoff run, including wins over Dover Sherborne, Norwell, Old Rochester Regional, Stonem, and finally Littleton. Middleborough was well represented at Gillette with performances from the band, the cheerleaders, and the majorettes, and a sea of S H Ms in the crowd. Hearing the Nelly chants late in the fourth quarter was truly a great tribute to an even greater man who left his mark on all of us. And I just wanted to say, like, I saw the high five thing before this, and it was, it was cool to have Channel 5 come down and do a piece on us. And congratulations to Evan Adelman for being featured on Channel 4 last week. Your perseverance inspires us all. Great job at Gillette on Saturday. The Key Club had their annual Eat to Heat dinner last night with 5:00 and 6:30 seatings. Lorenzo's catered the event, and all proceeds go to help the needy heat their homes this winter. Thank you to members of the Key Club and the English Honor Society for volunteering their time for a great cause. And the student council is celebrating the holiday season through service with a few opportunities to give back. First off, we are hosting a blood drive through next Thursday with non-perishables being donated to the St. Vincent de Paul Food Pantry. Students can also buy a gift for a child in the community through the S H M Santas Program, an extension of the Sacred Hearts Giving Tree Program. And the Holiday Helper Program focuses on providing a Christmas tree and decorations for four underprivileged families. And finally, on December 20th, we have the Student Council Holiday Party with guests from the Conway House. Students can share a meal, play games, and make arts and crafts with the children, and rumor has it Santa might make an appearance. The music department is holding their annual holiday concert next Tuesday, December 12th, at 7:00. Today, students in the class of 2019 and I were able to tour four of the six colleges of the Fenway in Boston, Mass Art, Emmanuel College, MCPHS University, and the Wentworth Institute of Technology. And the winter sports season has started up. Good luck to all the athletes, and hopefully it can be as successful as the fall season was. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any questions, Frere? Any school committee members have anything they wish to discuss? Seeing no one, I do, I take that back. I do, we're going to discuss the Super Bowl a little later, so I do want to mention to the community one thing. On Tuesday evening, December 19th, which will be a boys varsity basketball game at 7:15 during, in Abington, tip-off's at 6:30, that night is Sean Newcomb Night, and Sean's agreed to come and be honored by the school and the town. The Board of Selectmen are declaring December 19th Sean Newcomb Day. School and Little League will be honoring him as well, and he's decide, he's going to be there and sign autographs with the kids afterwards, anyone who wants it. For those who don't know, Sean is currently a member of the Atlanta Braves. He was drafted 12th overall by the California Angels, and it's just a great opportunity. Went to University of Hartford, and his family's a great family in town, and Sean's a great kid, and it's great to honor kids like that. So he had a, this was his first full season in majors. He had a great year, although the Atlanta Braves did not have a great year, and we hope it pans out much better for his team next year.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add, he is a graduate of the class of 2011 from Middleborough High School. He's also, has also been inducted into the Middleborough High School Hall of Fame already, so congratulations to Sean. Great local success story for a young man who came through the Middleborough Schools, graduated Middleborough High School, and is now a, a major league baseball player and a pro athlete, and to his credit, it's a lot of hard work on his part.
I know Mr. Catino couldn't be here tonight. He'd sent the superintendent and I a letter. He's finishing up with his treatments, so we wish him well and wish him a speedy recovery. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. First of, my agenda is the Super Bowl update, and Owen stole my thunder there a little bit, but I just want to, I just want to talk a little bit about the outpouring of S H M pride from this community. I spoke with an MIA rep after the game, and he said it was the largest small-town hometown crowd he's ever seen at Gillette in any of the Super Bowls since going to this new format, where they went from 19 Super Bowls to eight Super Bowls. So it's a credit to Middleborough, it's a credit to the students of Middleborough High School, their parents, community members, grandparents, cousins, aunts, uncles, friends. The, we have pictures of the stands, and the stands are absolutely packed. The spirit was there. It was a cold Saturday morning, but we were all warmed by a tremendous victory that day, and win or lose, it would have been a great day, but it was great that they won and took the Super Bowl championship home. So we'll be hearing more about this team as we move forward in the coming weeks with some appearances, but it is fantastic that this team was able to take home the Super Bowl trophy, and it sits at the high school. If anyone would like a closer look, they can always go up and take a look at the high school, so.
One thing I was amazed at, that I heard about, that I want to mention to the committee, the last time that the, the Middleborough played in the Super Bowl was 1980?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
Yep.
And that, that would have been the class of 84, if you will, because you played the season before. Apparently, anyone who was around from a class, from that team went to the game to root those kids on, so I thought that was extra special for those kids to know that the class of 84 actually-
One of the dads, Sean Holden, was there in his Letterman coat that he wears to the games.
That's right.
So, and he's the dad of, yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So that was great. The Middleborough High School has won, has been in four Super Bowls through the years. In the fall of 1974, Alumni Stadium at Boston College was a loss, and then in the fall of 78, my senior year, being graduated in '79, we won at Nickerson Field at Boston University, and, which I think is a dorm now, or that area. And then in '79, the same, we won in '79, and we won in '83. So we are three and four in Super Bowls historically, throughout the history of the Super Bowls, and I spoke with the quarterback for the 1974 team, and he mentioned the fact that his trivia question is still active, which is, who's the only losing quarterback from Middleborough High School in a Super Bowl? And his, he's a fellow named Yogi Stewart, he's a great guy, and he was actually on the school committee at one point in Middleborough. So, great guy, and I actually spoke to him after the game, or at the game, and had a chance to talk with him. Interestingly enough, the, the Super Bowl quarterback, my year in 1979, or '78-'79, was David Fisher, local restaurant owner and purveyor, so congratulations, David. And then the quarterback in the following year was a fellow named Tony Jeffrey, who used to own half of the Central Cafe and was an attorney in town for, for a while before he moved permanently down to Falmouth, Massachusetts, and up in Maine. So, it's a little history there, but figure out how to throw it out. My next item is the community service requirements at the high school, and we have a couple of folks from the high school that are here down to talk to us. We have Principal Paul Branigan, and we have Sue McGurk, who's the faculty supervisor for community service, and she is joining us tonight. I saw both of these folks at the Eat, the Eat to Heat dinner last night, which is a wonderful event, so we welcome you both tonight to, to discuss this matter and some things going on at the high school with regard to community service. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone, and just, I do want to take a moment and just thank the community for really just an outstanding weekend, and the support of the team and of the school, and to the Middleborough Fire Department and Police Department for helping have one heck of a parade. So it was just a really great day. We're really excited to be here to share with you about our community service requirement. It was, been a long time coming. It has been a vision of the school for many, many years to really ensure the fact that our students are able to engage in service, but more importantly, have it transfer into really an intrinsic motivation for them of the importance of it. And through the hard work of a committee, they began to really look at how to create service opportunities, but more importantly, make it a requirement, and then really through the outstanding leadership of Mrs. McGurk, really has brought it to a level of really the management, and I'm really excited for her to be able to share really kind of how she has been able to take the program and really become the overseer, but also the gatekeeper of really so many opportunities of service that our community has reached out to us about, but then also students being able to go out and find their own opportunities as well. So, Susan.
All right. Thank you very much. So we established the requirement for 24 hours of community service, starting with the class of 2020, which was last year's freshman, and we, we got some ideas from Tammy Miller, works in our guidance department part-time, and she also works for the town of Carver, and she runs their community service program, so she was instrumental in giving us ideas on how their program works, and we started out by coming up with a list of pre-approved nonprofit organizations, and we formed a faculty committee to consider organizations that were on the list, that students might come to us with ideas that they wanted to do. So we have a committee to approve or disapprove their ideas. I created a display case outside of the guidance department to advertise the opportunities that come to us from the town, and there's a section of the Middleborough High website where the students can go to see the pre-approved activities, and also see ongoing opportunities that are out there, like the Conservation Commission's always looking for people, or Cemetery Commission, and then also upcoming ones. I put a couple of examples in there. The KOA Festival of Lights is this weekend and next weekend. They wanted volunteers, so we advertised that. And also, there's an interesting one where the Council on Aging contacted me this summer about elderly people in the town that have technology that they don't know how to use well, whether it's computers, or iPads, or their phones, so they wanted to see if they could find high school students to pair up with them, to tutor them in, in using those technologies. So we've put that advertisement out there, and that's for December, the last week of December. So we've had some students volunteer, working on that. So I put on this paper a current status of since September, since I've been running this. I've had Google Sheets keeping track of students that submitted hours, so for the classes of 2020 and 2021, the freshmen and sophomores have about 1,115 hours that they've submitted, and the classes of 2018 and 2019 aren't required to do hours, but some of them, a lot of them do hours through student council, the Key Club, the Yes Club, and, and some of the different charity groups in town, and they, they've submitted another 125 hours. So when the students do the community service and they record the form, they're required to reflect on, you know, what they did, how it went, and if they have suggestions for anyone doing that activity in the future. And also, with this year's freshman class, we're instituting an archive project, which, if you look on the back of the paper I gave you, it has the number seven school-wide learning expectation for students, which is demonstrate the value of service to the welfare of the community. So on their archive project, as they do community service activities over the years at the high school, they'll choose one to focus on and reflect on in their archive project. I put a few samples on here of examples that students submitted, submitted to me that they have done recently, from the DARE program, the ghost tours at the town hall, Eagle Scout projects, the Jimmy Fund Walk, the Bat Run, they've gone to nursing homes, Special Olympics, Veterans Day breakfast a couple of weeks ago, Whale of a Family Night at Bridgewater State, which was an environmental awareness program, and our recycling programs. So a wide array of activities that the students are engaged in, and then a couple of the upcoming samples. So going forward, we have advisory meetings with the students every month or so, and in the January one, I'm going to have the teachers distribute the tally of what students have accomplished so far, and I plan to do that at the end of every semester, so that going forward, they'll be reminded regularly of what they've accomplished, what they still need to accomplish to meet the 24-hour requirement, and also to keep reminding them of how to seek out volunteer opportunities. So as I said, I have the opportunities posted online on the school website, on a bulletin board outside of guidance, and then when there's something significant, like the KOA Festival of Lights, we do announcements over the loudspeaker for a couple of days. And so I will continue to promote the service learning requirement to the public, working on establishing connections with different community groups. You know, some of them are finding out my name via social media or other ways, so, like the Council on Aging reached out to me. So if anyone knows of any groups in town that are seeking volunteers, I would be the contact person at the high school and email me, so. Does anybody have any questions?
She's also a Spanish teacher at Middleborough High School. That's her role during the day, so I wanted to mention that.
Thirteen years in.
Yeah, absolutely. Add a question about graduation. Is this a requirement for graduation for this, this group?
Yes, it is, starting with the class of 2020, 24 hours.
We should also point out that, as much as this is the requirement for 2020, there are also requirements if, for example, you're in an honor society. Mostly honor societies require a certain amount, and I know most of the sports teams now are required to do a community service piece through Mr. Silva. He's asked each team to do it, and so it isn't, it isn't, you know, like, that's all they're doing, and I think that that's an important piece, too, that a lot of these groups have pieces to do, and that's, that's fantastic.
Mr. Chair?
These are great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much for this update. I remember when this was just a budding idea and a concept, and you came before us, Paul came before us and kind of spoke about this, I think it was a couple of years during the program of studies, when you're talking about iterating and adding this component, and to see where you're at with the process and really outlining and tracking, and that's a lot of work for a lot of students, and it's so important. And I loved this piece. It was in our Dropbox, kind of this tracker that will be added, and you, Paul, had come and explained the concept of this archive project, which is so rich, and what a great portfolio that students will have walking out the door, and this is such a critical piece. So thank you for your work on this. It is so wonderful to finally see this come to fruition, and all the details and the process supporting it, and thanks for stepping up to take on this role.
Thank you. It's a real pleasure. Such a meaningful experience for the students and the community, and part of our job is growing new citizens for the town and the state and the country, so to have them doing this also is great. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Branigan, you're sticking around for a second to talk about NIASC for a moment?
All right.
And Miss McGurk, excuse me, once again, thank you for coming. Appreciate it, and thanks for spearheading this program. Mr. Branigan is here under a second line item here, or second item, excuse me, I've got the budget on my mind here, to talk about NIASC, which is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is, has a commission on public schools to provide accreditation for current schools, and we're at the process where, you know what, I'm going to let Mr. Branigan explain that we're, this is a progress letter that we've received as a result of a report that was submitted to them, and go ahead, Mr. Branigan.
Right. Thank you. It's part of the accreditation process, when NIASC came to our school in 2013, from there, there are the two huge benchmarks we have to meet, the two-year report and the five-year report, and crazy enough that the five-year report is due on March 1st, 2018, and then from that point, it begins the journey of preparing for the next visit that will happen in 2023. But in between those milestones, there are many progress reports that you must submit to the, to the, to NIASC in regards to your progress of the recommendations, and for the community to remember, to remind, that when we had our NIASC study, we had over 70 recommendations that were given to us after that NIAS visit. So the charge is, is you have to be able to show evidence that you have completed all of those recommendations and have met the expectations that they have set forth. So we are very close to doing that, and that five-year report that will be due in March, we are already been working on making sure the fact there's areas that we do need to beef up, that we're doing that, but we're very confident that that five-year report in March is going to be solid. However, the report that you have was something we had to submit by September 15th, and it was really focused on three areas. One curriculum, two guidance, and three was based on the facility itself. We were able to very proudly say where we were in the process with the facility, and we have to now go back. One of the recommendations is to make sure the fact that they want to see the update of the status of the high school building project, so we'll be really excited to let them know in March that we are, we're full steam ahead for building a new high school. Our curriculum, which we spent a lot of time really making sure that NIAS could see the significant work that has been done in all content areas of really creating a very standards-based curriculum, which they were very impressed with. However, now we need to make sure we're showing them a renewal process. They were happy with where we're at, but they got to make sure that we're showing that we're constantly breathing new life into that curriculum and to show evidence of that. And the last one is really just looking at our professional development and creating the professional learning communities, and really the engagement of that faculty education and growth as well. They were very impressed with the guidance department and really the growth that they've had, that has been a real source of, of, I wouldn't say angst for us, but it's been an area that we've really had to place a lot of focus on, of how we personalize a student's education. We were really happy to see really what came out of that report, where, what we're doing with that department, so we were pleased with that. So this report that you have just highlights the areas that they were very impressed by in that special progress report, and more importantly, the areas that we will have to address. There were three recommendations that they gave that we have to make sure in that five-year report in March, that we're highlighting those three, and then we're also highlighting the 70-some-odd recommendations that need to be met.
Paul, is the vast majority of things in, in that particular report that were problematic were facility-related, not programmatic-related, and they, they mentioned over and over again the problems with our facilities. That has since been rectified, and given the fact that the next visit they make in 2023, they'll be walking into our new building, I think that would be very, very helpful.
Absolutely. And that's something that is stated throughout all of our documents, is just really about how we've had to work within the facility to make sure that we are doing the upgrades, the library project that was done a few years ago, and so on, that we were able to show evidence the fact that we have worked within our means to be able to make sure we're providing students there the best possible education we can in a facility that we've grown out of. So it will be very nice to be able to show that it's been now in completion for that particular expectation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
It would be so great to read through this report and see how far you've come. I mean, truly, and it was recognized in the letter, and to have only three bullet points, and one of them just update us on your progress, where's the building project at, is quite amazing. And the other two, I know you're already working on, because you've come here and you've presented on them, so this is quite wonderful to hear, and thank you for that report and this update.
Any other questions, or Paul? Paul, thank you. We know it's been a busy couple of weeks for you.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On my report, Mr. Chair, next is a business and finance update with our finance and business manager, Mrs. Kathy Piatelli. So as Mrs. Piatelli settles in, she's going to talk about the food service revolving accounts and give us an update on the FY 2019 budget process. We had a meeting with the department heads this week, and we had a little up-to-date session with Bob Noons, town manager, so, Mrs. Piatelli, welcome again. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is my weekly update, I feel like weekly weekend update on the Saturday Night Live. I wanted to highlight a revolving account once every meeting. So I put in a Dropbox, a summary of national school lunch according to the DESE, and that included the reimbursement rates that the state provides us, as well as a chart that the Department of Revenue, under the Division of Local Services, organizes all revolving accounts for the schools, what they're for, who can use them, who has to approve them, all the requirements that we work under. So on the school lunch program, there are two, the funding sources are the daily sales, whether it's cash every day when the student brings in their $3, or parents prepay meals through the point-of-sale service, also federal reimbursements. Those are our two funding sources. The whole program is pretty much self-sustained. The whole program is pretty much self-sustaining except, except for health benefits. So all of the labor is covered by the sales and the reimbursements, as well as the supplies and equipment and any repairs to the equipment. Some of the equipment is pretty old, and when it needs to be replaced, we're able to fund it through the revolving account. This for people who didn't have a copy of the rate sheet in there. For every paid lunch, we reimburse $0.42. For the reduced-price lunch, we get $2.88. And for the free lunch, we get $3.28. When they up their rates and they required fruits and vegetables to be five servings a week, they asked that all school lunches average out to $2.75. So with our $3 at the secondary level and $2.75 at the elementary, we are right where we need to be at $2.88. The DESE recommends you have three months of operating expenses on hand so that you're able to, should anything happen, provide services and to the students. So taking our labor rates right now for three months, it's $175,000. Supplies and materials, approximately $150,000. So that's like ballpark. Currently, we started the year out this year with a positive balance of $534,000. And I wanted to put in 2012 and 13, that was the year we actually brought the program back in-house. We were outsourced to Chartwell's and we brought it back in. That was the beginning balance when Rebecca Bagnell took over the program. So I think she's done a fabulous job because we are very healthy. We have the three months' worth of expenses that we need. And we do have some aging equipment that will soon be need to replace. So we'll be in a position to do that out of this fund. Last year, we did have to replace the high school walk-in cooler and freezer. And it was purchased as a portable. It's, it's a big walk-in. They actually had to build it, but it can be taken apart and moved to another school when we move into our new building. So we couldn't wait to buy the freezer. Also, Mary Good needed a new walk-in cooler freezer, and we replaced the hardware on the point-of-sale system because that was prior to 2010 it was purchased. So that was needed to be replaced. And this was all funded through the revolving account. DESE reviews the lunch program every three years in a three-year cycle. So we had our last one in the spring of 2016, and that was towards the middle of their cycle because we're up again January 2018. They'll be back here next month, and that's the beginning of their cycle. So you never know where you're going to fall. It's not every three years in your world. It's in their cycle. Yes?
The last review, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think at that point, we actually had to raise our prices because we were undervalued at that time.
Because we didn't meet that average, the, the average of the reimbursement rate. Correct. And like I said, they'll be here next month. And that's our quick update of the lunch. This isn't about our program. This is just the revolving account. Rebecca has so much more information on the day-to-day living in the kitchen. So if anyone has any questions?
Kathy, I can assume that any change in equipment at the high school will be bought so that it can be moved to a new high school.
Absolutely. Just like they did with the walk-in cooler.
Yeah.
Had that in mind before the vote, so we were just hopeful.
Any questions for Kathy on the revolving account?
No. Mr. Chair, though, thank you for the information you put in the Dropbox. That was really helpful, some background information that was in there. Appreciate that.
2019 budget. So we have, as Brian said, we met with the department heads at the town hall on Monday. Mr. Noons mapped out the budget scheduling timeline for all of the departments within the town. And he did recognize that we do have our own process here. But the town meeting has been set for April 23rd. And we have been going in before the Board of Selectmen somewhere around February. So I think that's our goal. All of the administrators have their requests. They've been sending them in this past week. Brian and I are going to sit down with each of the administrators next week just for a quick overview of what they're requesting. And then I would like to put together a, our timeline for the Budget Subcommittee, maybe to start meeting right after Christmas so that we are right in line to go in February for the... Soon as the governor's budget comes out at the end of January, that's when Mr. Noons has an idea of the funds that we'll be receiving and lets us know. So that's our plan for 2019.
Where the state funding does revolve somewhat around student population, has there been any changes since the last time we talked, around October 1st?
We're up from last year.
We're up from last year, okay.
Yes, we are. So hopefully that will certainly help us. I don't know if it's significant enough to cause an increase in our level funding, if it's going to be more than just the per pupil, but fingers crossed. Is that it?
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Yes. While she's here, do we want to take six, item six?
Yeah, sure. That's, that's great. Part-time one-on-one nurse.
Go ahead.
I'll just read a memo from Carolyn Lyons, PPS Director, just so everyone understands. Memo dated December 1st with a need for a part-time nurse at the, at the MECC. The PPS Department is in need of a one-on-one nurse for a medically fragile student who's scheduled to begin her schooling in the district on a part-time basis. Student has significant and complex medical needs that require one-on-one nursing services during the time the student is in school and during transportation to and from school each day. Due to the medical needs of the student, the district will need to provide this nurse for three half-days per week and tutoring during the days of non-attendance and periods of absence due to significant medical, medical needs in order to provide the student with a free and appropriate public education. I hope this information is helpful. Should you have any questions about this memo, please contact me. Signed, Carolyn J. Lyons, J.D. So this is obviously one of those things that comes up during the year that is a requirement of us to do. And we ask that it be an action item, and it is placed on the, on the agenda tonight as an action item.
Budgetable item as well. It's why, I, we had Kathy there. That's why I brought it up. Sorry. But are we also going to have to approve a part-time tutor? Or do we have that already on staff available to us? Because it looks as though we also may need a part, a part-time tutor for those days which the student isn't in school.
We have tutors who we send out all through the year, and we have a budget line for that. So that's in place. As far as the funding for the nurse, we have a part-time float nurse in our budget that we have not filled. And we only are part-time, and we're sharing it with the grant. So we still have our budget money. Yes, the budget's really tight. But within the salary lines, there is little flexibility to fund this position.
I know in the past, we've had difficulties finding nurses. Are we, you know?
In school spring, and you know, it is, we believe it to be a permanent position, but it all depends on the student. But it is a terrific hours, part-time, school schedule. So hopefully someone will be interested.
Unfortunately, this child has some, some very complex needs. And the child lives in Middleborough. And the child is ours.
Mr. Chair, I would stand a motion to approve the one-on-one nurse at this time.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a second? Discussion. It's, it's mandated, but we do want the best for this child. So I think that's the biggest thing we can do. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Brian requested that to be taken on a little bit of outer order. I just want to give a coordinated program review update or progress update. We did have the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the district. There were two representatives who were here. They were originally scheduled for five days. Then they, we moved the calendar to four days. They had requested four days. We were able to then consolidate the schedule, and they finished in three days. I was part of the final interview with the coordinator from the state, and then I participated in the exit interview. And from all indications, I think we did very well. And I'd like to thank certainly Carolyn Lyons and Ellen Driscoll for all their hard work and everybody that was involved. There's Dr. Melanie Gates. Everyone was involved in the process. They do submit a report within 25 to 30 days. We then have 10 calendar days to respond to that. They then submit the final report. And in that final report, there are actionable items that we have to respond to in kind. So they have looked through and will make some suggestions on how we can better improve the services that we provide to our special-needs students. They also dealt with the English-language learners, students and, and their files. And what we've been able to do, we've come a long way in that area in an emergence population. We now have elementary report cards that are in Brazilian and Portuguese and, and Spanish. And we, we have come a long way in that area. But, and they do understand the fact that with, we're a low-incidence district where we have a very small population and, but they also have certain requirements. So we look forward to their report and our response to it, but we will certainly keep the school committee informed as to where we stand in that process. Any questions on that?
It appears that we're going to have to take at some point and add some information to our, our school-wide, school-district policies. So at some point, we should send that over to Policy Review.
We definitely need a policy subcommittee, and I think that the chair is going to take care of that in a little while with regard to establishing that. We have a number of policies that need to be tweaked, actually updated, but just slightly tweaked in that our, the coordinated program review had to send out a disclaimer with regard to civil rights. And we had to add a couple of items to that that have, this is, this has emerged through the years with regard to our disclaimer. And that needs to be added to a number of different policies. For right now, that with a, with a quick purview and a memo from Ellen Driscoll and Melanie Gates that you saw and probably in your Dropbox. If you didn't, it is in there. And so in order to universally implement the above disclaimer statement, we do have to update those policies. So that will become part of policy updates.
And I had this discussion, just so everyone knows, too, that in cases like that in which it, it meets the state law, we do not have to go through the normal three readings. It's just we're going to blanket all those pieces that we add to it and just go from there, just so everyone knows about it. And it meets, if you think about it this way, no matter what, we're still under state law. So even though our, our policy may not have it written, it doesn't matter. We still have to comply with that piece.
And just so folks know at home perhaps what the disclaimer policy is, it currently reads that the Middleborough Public School System does not discriminate in its educational activities or employment practices on the basis of age, color, creed, disability, ethnicity, gender identity, genetic information, homelessness, marital status, national origin, political, political affiliation, pregnancy, race, religion, sex, sexual orientation, veteran or military status, or any other basis protected by federal and/or state law. So that is the disclaimer as it has been updated. And we've also obviously checked with our legal department there, too, just to make sure. Here we go. Any questions on that? All right. We have some surplus obsolete equipment. We have a 2001 Chevy Silverado, which has outlived its shelf life. The folks at Kelly's uptown have determined that it needs complete brakes. It needs a transmission. It has pervasive rotting that they would never put an inspection sticker on. So it has become scrap, or if it's, can be used through our school committee policy by any other department in town for parts and/or they can certainly claim that. And through this policy, I would post that out to any other commit, any other department in town. It is a 2001 Chevy Silverado, has a whole lot of miles. It did a lot of good work for us, a lot of plowing through the years. And it's green in color. If you've ever seen it, it's sort of a light minty-green. But it is being declared obsolete as recommended by Jim Hutchinson, Director of Facilities, and Kathy Piatelli, Director of Business and Finance.
I would move that we declare the 2001 Chevy Silverado VIN number ending in 864 surplus.
I just want to point out one thing. If no, my understanding is if no other town department wants it, it's going to, we're not going to, it's going to scrap. We're not going to put it out for bid or anything like that, what we have done in the past. The, it's just obsolete.
It's not a standalone vehicle anymore. It really is, yeah, parts.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next on the agenda for my report is the beginning of discussions with regard to the 2008, 2000, excuse me, 2018, 2019 Middleborough Public Schools calendar. You have a copy of the draft number one in, in your package, and we certainly can begin discussions on it tonight. Obviously, we certainly can end discussions on it tonight, but generally, we have readings of this and discussions about this and where we want to go with this. So.
And this is similar to this calendar year.
Mr. Chairman.
I would like to look at a couple of things. We were, we talked about looking at our absentee rates for these Friday slash long weekend ones. And also, we could, if we could look at the Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving of this year, maybe compare it to the year before. If there's a way of doing that, that'd be great, just to see what happened. I just would be curious. I, I don't, I don't expect anything huge, but it'd be nice to know.
I've requested that information already, and Mrs. Gudine has, Mrs. Gudine has already prepared those reports that Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving compared to the year before.
Yeah.
So, and the attendance on the Tuesday compared to the Wednesday from last year, that release day, the half-day. So she has begun that process. She did send me that port part. The other, you'd, you'd like to see the Fridays, half-days. You want to take another look at that?
That Memorial Day one, the Memorial Day one would be an interesting one. I think it was the Memorial Day of the last year. Well, there's three of them, but I think that once people got used to having that Friday, and they looked at Memorial, maybe that, they said, oh, we could maybe try something. I'd, I'd like to see what would happen with that. But yeah, those three, and see how they react, people reacted to it and see if there was more incidence of absentee rate.
Is it a pleasure of the committee to have that data for you for the next meeting?
Yes. Mr. Chair, and I would, I would say both the student, you know, attendance, as well as staff would be appropriate to look at. Thank you.
So we're these days and also the days leading up to Thanksgiving. Comparative study, sort of. I can do that. Excuse me.
Anything else with the discussion?
Mr. Chair, I thought the, the dates looked good. It, it still has us. The students would be starting the Tuesday after Labor Day like they did this year. Teachers going back the week before for the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of comprehensive PD, with the Friday being off before Labor Day for everybody, which is a, a nice piece, as well as all-new hires coming in the week before for that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They do that, that boot camp of, for all-new hires. So it kind of reflects what we did this year with, with, like I said, students coming back after Labor Day. And last day of school would be, tentatively has been voted yet, would be June 17th of 2019. Looking so far ahead. But, so I thought, I think the calendar puts it together well. Still have a vacation in February, vacation in April, and a really long March. Sorry. It always is.
So I just asked the school committee to take a, a real good look at that and, and make recommendations. And will, that, that would be your decision in terms of determining that calendar. So I'll prepare that information between myself, Mrs. Piatelli, and Mrs. Gudine, Katie Gudine, and get that information so that you have it in the Dropbox on the Friday previous to the meeting on the 21st is our next meeting. Thank you.
So what we'll do is if, if there's not a lot of change in the numbers, then we'll probably bring this to our vote at next meeting. If there's, if I think there's, there's things there that we should like think about for a little bit, I think we'll do it the first meeting in January, no later than that. Because we like to give parents as much time as possible to know what we're going to do for the, for the calendar year.
Mr. Steve? Clear the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That's the contract. So that is off no matter what we do. And the placement of the half-days is really what we're discussing.
This calendar year is the last year of the contract. So.
Right. Wow.
The one we're looking at currently in, on this paper is the last year of the contract.
2018, 2019 calendar, which we're working on for next year.
So that's the other point, too.
Year three.
I would tell the committee if there, if there's things, you know, we'll have that discussion later on. But I think one of the things to remember is, you know, the, the professional development days that we have is in comparison to, I believe it was... days that we have is in comparison to, I believe it was 12 half-days throughout the school year. And so that was the essential change that we made.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It was still three, it was still the full professional days plus 12. We've now dropped to six half-days, or early release days, I should say, versus 12, so, and then we, stacking all those PDs up front, I thought was one of the best things, because it used to be a PD the day after the last day of school, which I always wondered how, what kind of PD were you getting on the last day of school after the students all left? I thought that bringing them all up front was a great use of those PDs, and really preparing, I mean, preparing the teachers for that next year. Little changes to Aspen or something, things like that that you could do. So thank you for doing that.
The next item on the agenda is a community forum report. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to report out that a recent visit that we made to the Democratic Town Committee had requested, myself, a member of the Middleborough Education Association and the Chair of the School Committee to attend one of their meetings to talk about current issues in education. It was a fairly well-attended morning, I would say. I would say there was probably between 30 and 40 folks in the room, very much interested in hearing about Middleborough and Middleborough Public Schools and what we've been doing. Talked about the strategy for continuous district improvement, talked about the challenges we face with regard to resources, talked about some of the issues and the challenges we face with our community, and talked about the Family Resource Center and some initiatives we've taken in the district. It was quite a nice discussion, a couple hours of banter back and forth, and I think it was really progressive. But I just wanted to report out to the committee that, that we did do that. If somebody comes up to you and says, hey, we saw the superintendent at a public forum, I know the Democratic Town Committee has put together some different forums where they're going to talk on different issues throughout the year. This just happened to be the kickoff, and it was a Saturday morning down at the library. So I just wanted to report out to you that that did occur, and not a nice discussion. We brought the designs for the new high school, and there was a lot of good interest in that. Concerns about the layout, which were brought up by folks, and it was actually, some feedback was certainly, went back and forth between folks, so it was a productive, productive morning, so.
This was a poll that was done at crazy days over what issues resonated with the town of Middleborough, and number one was education. And then after that came, I believe, job, job growth, veterans affairs, and so the Democratic Town Committee will continue to have forums all year on all those pieces, and if people are interested, they're more than welcome to come. They're out at the library.
Next, I, just a couple of sports fundraisers that I wanted to feature. We have an ice comedy night at the Elks with the hockey group. Just so you know, the ice hockey group raises between $15,000 and $20,000 a year to help defray the costs of the ice time for our hockey team. We would not be able to have a hockey team if it were not for this group, this active group. They have a golf tournament in the spring, they have a fall, and they have a fundraiser during the year. Last year was a Jim Plunkett, sort of a happy hour thing at the Elks. This year, they are having the comedy night. The tickets are open. I don't believe they're available quite yet, but that is something that if you can put it on your calendar, if you're interested in going, please attend. Last year did sell, it did sell out, and it was quite, quite a fun evening. You also have another one, which is the mattress sale, which is Saturday, February 10th. If you're interested in buying a mattress and you're thinking about it, it is all state-of-the-art, brand-new mattresses from the manufacturer that are sold in the high school gym, and so that's a great opportunity to buy a mattress, and it becomes a fundraiser for the MASBA, which is the Middleborough All Sports Boosters Association, which actually works with the ice hockey group also. So a couple of big fundraisers coming up in February. If you could save your pennies after you pay your, off your gifts at Christmas time or holiday time, then please look forward to those community efforts, like I said, those, both of those groups. And we've had MASBA before us donating $10,000 and $15,000 a year to the school system. They sponsor our Hall of Fame. They sell jerseys down at the football games, and I know Mr. Givenoni was there Thanksgiving Day selling sweatshirts with my little daughter, and it's just a, it's just a community effort, and we would not be able to do the things we do without the efforts of these groups. So thank you very much to those groups, and those folks that might be watching at home with those groups.
And just one quick thing, too. If I remember correctly, from the MASBA mattress sale, it's a situation where even if you don't want, if you're not going to buy a mattress, the number of people who physically walk through the gym that day, they get a dollar amount per person. So even by stopping by and just wandering around and saying hi to the MASBA people, they'll get additional dollars. So if people can do that, that'd be great.
And if you want a Sealy Beauty Rest Black, it's there. And if you, whatever mattress you want, it's there. All the, all the manufacturers are there, so thank you for that. Finally, with mine, it says Fall Sports Banquet, it should say Fall Sports Awards Night. Mr. Ryan Sylvia, who is our new A.D., put together a new concept this year where he got all the fall athletes in one room who could make it, and presented the awards for all of the sports at one time, whether it be cross-country, or soccer, or actually cheerleading and twirling. All of those student athletes were there. They all recognized themselves, they all clapped for themselves. It was a great night, I was able to attend, and it was the first of its kind. He still respects the fact that there will still be smaller banquets with each of these groups, and he knows that, but he also wants to get all these student athletes and talk about the importance of being a student athlete, and the importance of we, the high school being a community, and the Nichols Middle School, the Nichols Middle School teams were invited and did show up, and their parents, of bringing all these folks together and recognizing their accomplishments throughout the year, so that the soccer team knows what the cheerleaders are doing, and the cheer, they already do, but it's just a celebration of that. So first of its concept, I think it was, went very well. There are very few empty seats in the auditorium, and they had it ready to go and sink down to the gym if need be. So Mr. Siciliano, who's in the back room tonight, had that ready to go, just in case we overflowed from the auditorium, just, just so he was ready to go, much like we have with the town meeting, so. And that's finally on my report.
With regards to that event the other night, I happened to be there where I have students in schools and in sports, and it was really an awesome thing, when you're seeing other teams cheering for other teams even, sitting in there, and supporting their fellow teammates of other teams, and that's what, that's what, when I sit there and I look at the community that's in that high school and that energy that Mike Lynch talks about on the High Five, that energy that's in the school district, it was evident that night. I mean, I'm sitting in there, I'm like, I'm getting chilled at times, and I'm like, wow, this is just awesome to be here. I sat right smack dab in the middle, and, and I'm just looking at everything and saying, wow, you know, I've never, in my years, I'm only, I'm only 46, but in my years, I've never seen something like that, where you celebrate everybody, and the accomplishments by all the different teams, and the individual accomplishments by some of those outstanding sports athletes from the different sports were all recognized across the South Shore League, from soccer to cheerleading. I mean, they were recognized for their accomplishments as well. It's just awesome, and then, like Mr. Sylvia did say, the, the sportsmanship awards, that's, that was a big piece too.
Cross-country teams.
Yeah, that was, that was really cool to see that.
South Shore Sportsmanship Awards, which is awesome.
Which is all part of the sports program. It is about winning, because you want to win, but it's also about other things, and sportsmanship is a big part of it.
And our quarterback, Evan Bush, was given an award for the entire South Shore. He was the All-Star of, of the, the number-one star for the entire South Shore League, but he, they announced that, and spontaneously, the entire auditorium stood up and gave him a round of applause. I saw his mom and dad hugging and little tears to their eyes, but, you know, the humility that that young man has played with and the leadership that he has demonstrated was obvious in that response, and it was, it was really great, it was a great night, so.
There was, there was an award, because they were giving out coaches' awards for different teams, and instead of an MVP, one of the, one of the groups had a leadership award, and I thought that was really cool, too. I saw that, and I thought that was a really awesome award. That's the one that I'd want to win, leadership, because you're, not just MVP, leadership, that was awesome.
But really well orchestrated by Ryan Sylvia, A.D., and Mary Farley was standing up there as Assistant Athletic Director, our new Assistant Athletic Director/Trainer, and she assisted him with all of the night, and it was very well-run, very well-synchronized, and really a couple hours it was done, but it was well worth a couple hours to get all of those recognitions done. So that's the end of my report, and thank you very much.
MSBA update, the only thing I wanted people to know about, we're obviously going to continue to meet and work on the high school project, but it appears that given the timeframe that we have to do and have to abide by to meet certain requirements, that ground will break January of 2019 on the new high school.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Our next meeting of that committee, which is a public meeting, and it meets at 5:00 on, I believe it's Wednesday, the 27th of December, at the Town Hall in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. It's also recorded, I don't think they broadcast it live, but it's recorded as well, but it's available, public is welcome to attend. And another piece of this that I, somebody was talking to me about the school, and they weren't happy about the money, and, and they said, you know, you keep saying that you need this new school for education, and if not, the students are going to, you know, they're going to sacrifice their education, and I said, no. I think that if we put all of our administration and our team in a cardboard box, our students would achieve. I'm not worried about that. This is all part of the progress and updating and making for a better community. I, and the person was shocked when I said it that way, but I really feel that way. We could probably put anyone in anything, and those, those teachers are going to teach, and the students are going to learn because of the energy that's in that building. It's just so positive.
Mr. Chair, we are in, just for the record, we're in what's called Phase Four. It's called design development. Sometimes you'll hear us refer to it as DD. It's not Dunkin' Donuts. It's design development, and that's the phase in which we get right down to the tile, the rug perhaps in one or two areas, wall color, designed, very detailed design, right down to the screw really, and what's being used. So that gets into that, and then what happens after that, and we work through the faculty, we've already had a meeting on technology, we've had a meeting on security, both chiefs attended. We had a lieutenant from the Police Department attend, Bobby Ferreira, the chief, Joe Perkins. We had Lance Benjaminio and Tim Reed from the Fire Department. So they're all part of this process as we move forward through this design development. It can be painstaking, but it's important that we get it right. We talked a lot about a number of different things going on, we talked about security. And then as we move down the road, then we get, the, the major contractors go out for plumbing, for electrical, for steel, for HVAC, and then they get all of those major, major folks in and put in their bids, and then the general contractors come in and base their bids on those sub-bids. So that's what takes a year in the running to do this, or a year, a little bit, a year, a little bit over a year to complete this whole process and set up who is going to build this new high school and exactly how much it's going to cost.
I do also want to add, and I want to thank Paul, because throughout this process, time and time again, there has been more things heaped on Paul than I have ever seen in my life. He's had a run-through plans, he's now in the process of meeting with staff to decide who's going to have what desk and everything like that, but it also, the thing I want the committee to realize, you know, there's deadlines that we have to meet. For example, we have to meet a deadline at the end of December, and so Paul needs to get things done before he goes on Christmas break, and so I really appreciate the extra effort that you put in, Paul especially. I know how much you're excited about the new school and what it will mean to you and the kids, but you've gone over and above consistently throughout this process, and I really appreciate it. Subcommittee assignments are on there, we have a new member, and so subcommittees will be assigned at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be helpful, I think, for the new member, if you can send out a list of those subcommittees, and that way, if you have questions, you can reach out to the Chair or any of us to kind of inquire about what type of work goes on in that committee? We'd be happy to speak with you.
And I'll ask you what you might like, Greg, and I'll totally ignore you and put you on another thing. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve-
The consent agenda as presented this evening.
Second?
Discussion. Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. We finished off, as we mentioned before, the superintendent's new contract will be taken up at next meeting after our attorney puts a piece together. I really don't have anything else, except I want to make one comment to the community, and that is this. We are entering sort of our, our winter season. We're about to go on winter break, but I, what I want people, to remind people, is this. It's interesting, because I believe everything ended pretty much yesterday or today for winter athletes trying out for teams. Today or yesterday was the final date, which you made cuts and decided who was going to make certain teams. But the piece I want the community to know is, those kids don't get to take a winter break. Those kids have committed to their teams, and their teams play over the winter, and the best thing that anyone in the community can do is attend those games, and attend the swimming meets, attend everything, the basketball games, girls and boys, everything that's out there. It's listed on the high school website. It's fun, it's cheap, go in and watch a great game and root on some great kids. And, you know, we especially are thankful for those families who have made a commitment so that not to go away during that time, so that their, their kids will be a part of the team. It's tough, but they, those kids, you know, do that for their, to represent our school, and I think that's an important piece to mention.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to welcome Andrew Porter, Stacy Carr, Jaclyn Parker, Kathy Ann Malloy to Middleborough School District. And I noticed that there's another request for school choice coming in.
We have an additional high school student who begins tomorrow.
Excellent.
So, yeah, yep. And I also, Mr. Chair, through you, if I could just tell folks, there's, was an anonymous donation made to our food service this week from a couple that wanted to pay for any student that owed any money at the elementary level to the food service department. So any child that overcharged on a snack, or perhaps an ice cream, or owed money, or any child that was in arrears to the lunch program, this, this couple paid for that whole amount. So we thank them very much, they wish to remain anonymous.
That's awesome. That's, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Yes.
With Thursday, December 21st being our next meeting, I would move that we adjourn.
Second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.